Ladies and gentlemen, joining me for stand, is Fledge.
I do.
No, there was a couple other times.
Fledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to the March eighteenth council meeting. All my colleagues are here except for Randy and the auditor. And we will get started. Kiwanah Union Township Library. He will explain it to us.
Hello, Council. My name is Charles Rude with the Kiwanah Library. I'm here for a reappointment of a board position. I brought my candidate, our candidate, with me, Mr. Daniel Bates. He'd be happy to answer any questions about the library or what's going on over there or the process of appointment.
Did everybody read the literature?
We did some in the questionnaire. It was a little late coming. Sorry for the timeliness of that, but in the future, we will have those and provide them for you in plenty of time.
Any questions?
This is a four-year appointment, Daniel.
You understand, you're on air currently, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, do you understand what's required and what's needed?
Yes.
Thank you for your service so far.
Daniel's currently the president of the board, by the way.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Questions from the public? If they're not, I entertain a motion to approve Mr. Bates for another four-year term on the Union Township Public Libraries Board.
So moved.
Pete moved, Steve seconded, all in favor? Six-zero.
Thank you, Council. Appreciate your time.
No, appreciate you bringing it to us. Thank you, Mr. Bates, for your service.
Thank you.
Take a minute while they work on that. Next up is the annual report that has to be done by April fifteenth. And all it is, a report on the income on our TIF district. We do not have to do any vote on or anything else. It's just a financial report. That we have to do every year before it's sent into the state. So, are there any questions on this? I just wanted to let everyone be aware of this and so we know what's going on with TIF. Take time to study at home if you want to, but we will get that sent in. So, department updates. Seth, you look like you've been beat up.
No. Good afternoon. This morning, woke up, good day as usual. Get to come here in Surpholt County. Turned out even better when I got to see all you guys at this morning's meeting. During that meeting, I got a phone call from Chance here down at my office that, one, the residents there at Bud Lake had called in and said that that temporary dam we had put in, while we're waiting on this, we have to go to get, you know, done by the engineers and everything, had let loose. So, we left the meeting, went out, looked at, I've got to hold the contractor. Contractor is hoping to get me an estimate tonight and hopefully get out there tomorrow ahead of the rains. We're going to try rebuild this back. I'm going to go higher this time with it. The reason we had it the depth before was to try to keep it all within the ditch. And then if it went over, it'd go, stay in the ditch, not over the top of the banks. After reviewing this and then talking to a couple of the residents out there, we did go out to Rock Lake too. This water is flowing from Bud Lake to Rock Lake and went to that dam. And they did have, there was some debris either by Bieber or natural on top of that dam. We did pull all that to get that pressure off of Rock Lake, hopefully save those problems too. So, long story short, with this incident happening, we're going to have an extra bill for the contractor that I can't get around. And then, and I don't have an estimate yet, again, hopefully tonight. And then when I get back to the office, Lacy hands me with our QAWs next bill that they need on doing the work out here. Beginning of the year, my engineering fund, I have 10,000 engineering, so we've been paying these. So, if you look on here, they've got one from January thirty-first. That was sixty-eight hundred seventy bucks. I believe we ran that through our February drainage board meeting. That should have been paid. They should have that by now. I'm not sure why it's still showing that balance. For this invoice, there's eleven thousand eight hundred forty-four dollars and seventy-six cents. We still have down here, I have Lacy right out, thirty-one thirty left in our account, which we will run through on our April drainage board meeting. That being said, the remaining balance of this is eighty-seven fourteen seventy-six is where I'm going to need your guys' help to come in like we talked about last year on this. So, I bring you nothing but good news. I hope to have better news tomorrow with an estimate, knowing when the contractor's coming. When I get that estimate, I will try to email you guys all first thing in the morning along with commissioners. Everybody knows what's going on. And hopefully, saying yes, he's going to get there today, today being tomorrow. Get that first back. Again, once I hear from that, I'll let you guys know, but that's been a great, great thing.
Failure just because of the heavy rain we had?
I don't know if the rain pushed it. I don't know. I don't know.
It was just a temporary dam.
I don't know if the rain went over and wrote it out. I'm not sure.
It was just a temporary dam.
It was supposed to be a temporary dam, correct. It was probably twenty foot in length, the whole width of the ditch, the hole, and there's probably six foot of it right now that's chewed out and gone. So, which, again, that water has now been moved to Rock Lake, but we did go open that up. And I can tell you, for being sixty-five degrees this afternoon, the water's still frigging cold as we got into it, so. But, Rock Lake should not be an issue. We took half of that out. It's moving. It's not.
Did it affect the county road, any?
No. No. So, and then for you two, I know Patty probably knows you from John, but part of this also, we were, once we get this figured out, the culvert pipe underneath is also getting replaced. That's part of the permits and stuff. The pipe's not damaged. Nothing's damaged out there on that, but wouldn't bother me if it collapsed tonight, but you know.
But we, we've gotten DNR approval and all that stuff?
No, we're still waiting on the engineers to finish up, to get the approval from DNR, IDM, and Army Corps.
Okay, we're just trying to fix the initial issue.
Correct. We're trying to hold the water back, get the water back into Bud Lake. And that way, it's not, you know, twenty inches below what it was last summer of this time.
They say it'll be probably fall before they get it all?
They said it could be fall before they get the permits and everything from all the others to do this, to fix it. So, that's my thought exactly, but, you know, it's been a great, great afternoon.
So, you need us, we need to, we need to pay the eighty-seven fourteen now?
Correct.
Okay.
And then we'll, like I said, we'll pay the thirty-one thirty at our next drainage board meeting. And that'll exhaust my engineering fund for the year.
How will that affect that?
It'll be zero balance for me going forward.
But you, it won't deter you from doing any of your other?
Hope not. The engineering fund, for me, is set for some type situations like this. It's also set for people coming in for reconstructs on certain tiles especially. If we know there could be potential issues, either with a flat tile or certain people, et cetera, we'll have engineers go out, just take the liability off of me and put on a different entity in case something were to go south. But as of this point, I have not heard anybody come in and say they want to reconstruct anything. I've not heard anybody come in and say, you know, we, we want this done immediately. So, and that is kind of a plus with it being dry. Tiles don't need to work without anything going through.
Last year, when this all came to light, we decided that we would pay the initial cost. And Pete, correct me if I'm wrong, come out of rainy day because it was an emergency.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. So, what, any questions from anyone on board?
Not much we can do.
I suggest we keep it coming out of rainy day. Do I need a motion or we just, all right, I need a motion to pay the remaining balance of eighty-seven hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-six cents out of rainy day as we proposed last year. So, Pete moved. I need a second. Patty seconded. All in favor? Seven-zero. Also, did you make note that?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Randy. Good luck.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and do, you'll do an additional appropriations out of rainy day, is that correct?
I'll talk to Kathy with that.
Yeah, all right.
So.
We can have that and we'll probably have for the next.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Seth.
Face up. Seth.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, that happened to me yesterday.
You're getting a crooked finger. That's not good.
I tried going out that way.
Dawn, anything? Brittany?
Good evening, everybody. Just a couple things. Tomorrow, Priority Dispatch is flying in from like Utah and Florida, all the different places, to have the kickoff meeting for my police dispatching protocols. I did find out that Spillman, our CAD vendor, of course, costs money to implement the connection between Spillman and ProQA. That way, when we assign a call to a police call, the nature of the call will automatically kick open ProQA, which we already have for medical. So, it's just a different discipline. So, that's going to cost, I forget the exact amount, but about sixty-five hundred dollars. So, that's the maintenance for a year plus the install and implementation to connect the two disciplines together. That amount's about the same for medical. And then, once we implement the fire for ProQA and Spillman, it'll be about the same. So, off to budget for all three disciplines next year. Like I told the commissioners last night, I really have all the binders and all the information complete. That way, if we have to evacuate for weather or any reason to have to go to a different location to dispatch, I have a tote, I guess you could say, that has all that information in there. That way, it's a mirror image of the nine-one-one center. I did go to Legacy Christian for emergency education. They, the high schoolers had some health and safety classes. So, I went out there with a presentation about nine-one-one and also some of the stipulations it would take to be a law enforcement officer or police, or I'm sorry, or jail. They really enjoy the pictures of our canines. And I just told them to make sure they didn't run because they do hurt, I've been bit by one of those in a sleeve, not because I was breaking the law, but. I did go yesterday to Rochester Schools to do some nine-one-one testing. I know Gail in the past had also done that, so we're just going to keep up on that. We also tested their lockdown alarm systems in all of the schools and the administrative building. So, we were curious to see what the timeframe was between the setting off of the emergency alarm to how fast it goes in the nine-one-one center and how fast the text messages get to administration of the schools. And really, it was, it was pretty fast. We were, Rick Utter and I were pleased with the quickness of the information getting relayed. And I told the commissioners last night, our SRO for Rochester is doing a really great job on making sure that he's on the security and making sure that things, so he's doing great. Also, TJ DeBois and I and Dawn are organizing, I guess, a committee, you could say, to make sure that we have all the updated information, locations of the tornado sirens or warning sirens for weather. I don't know how long ago it was updated. I think it was the best for the information that we had at the time. So, now it's just time to reconvene, just to make sure that everything's working as we test them. We are going to try to get people posted at each place when we set those sirens off to make sure that they're working as should. TJ and I were kind of running around with our heads cut off and I think some of the EMA, when we had the National Weather Service testing, we only had some minor issues. Wayne Township siren wasn't rotating. Same with the Moose's. They're going off. They're just not rotating. So, it's just trying to reconvene to make sure to know who covers the cost of the sirens. And there seems to be some confusion, to my knowledge, since I've worked at the Sheriff's Department over the years, it's always been the township, but there's some discrepancy with that, so we're, we're working on it. Aside from that, I think Dawn will touch on Reach Alert. Is that correct? Okay. And the last thing is Dispatch has been really busy. I'm seeing some really high call volumes, whether that's weather, whether it's just starting to get statistics on taking over Rochester PD. I'm sure it's a mixture. I'm seeing it upwards over a hundred calls per day, which is quite a bit for us, it seems like, so. But, aside from that, I don't have anything else.
Questions for Randy? Public?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer?
One thing I have is the property tax file's been sent down to the printers and everything's a go. And tax statements will be printed April eighth and, or be printed and sent out April eighth, I should say.
Travis?
Good evening. I sent out the jail report, the annual jail report last week. Are there any questions or anything on that from anybody? It's a pretty comprehensive report. We have to do by statute, send it out by March thirty-first every year. February's monthly reports were also sent out. Any questions on that? Collections or anything? I guess you're going to make this real easy. We did have two resignations this last month from merit deputy positions, so we're down two. We've got the application process open to the twenty-eighth. We'll be testing on the fifth and then do backgrounds and interviews. Hopefully, be able to present one or two to the merit board during our April meeting. We invoiced for a hundred and three thousand two hundred and five dollars for the month of February. We're holding federal, DOC, and out-of-county inmates. Yesterday's population was a hundred and six. Fifty-two of those were Grant County. Twelve of them were federal. One was DOC. Progress on the pole building came back to life last week. They poured concrete. Gutters and downspouts should be done this week. There's been some, I don't want to say discrepancies, when the site prep guy did the site prep, he put it back approximately fifteen feet off of the, off of the pavement. It was only supposed to be back six, so we're going to have extra concrete that we're going to have to pour in there. It wasn't included in there. Additionally, with electrical and then HVAC and things like that, there's going to be added costs that hasn't been figured in yet. So, I know Chad's trying to get a figure put together for appropriation for you guys for that. We're looking at doing the appropriation out of the maintenance, the jail maintenance fund. Last time I looked in there, I think there's two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand in there. So, it's just what it is, just to get it finished up, so. Any questions on that? I tried to.
Who made the mistake of where they put it?
The site prep guy, according to Burns. So, I guess the specs call it to be six-foot, six-foot apron. And Chad said it's like fifteen and a half foot apron from the pavement to the, to the front of the, to the front of the building, so. And also, like gutters and downspouts, that wasn't included on there. The snow shield, I guess, that wasn't included on there on the original estimate. So, there's a lot of just little quirky things that wasn't included on the original estimate to get it finished up, to get it finished up right, so.
How much does it, I read the paper. How much does DOC owe us?
Twenty thousand. It was right at nineteen thousand and eight hundred, I think, was the last figure I heard through April. Or they stopped paying April, so April two, January first, and then other than January and February's billing. So, I know last month, we only had one DOC inmate in there, so it wasn't much last month. And I'm sure January was low too, but all in all, it's several million dollars that DOC owes those ninety-two counties in the state for holding their inmates. So, I guess when you're DOC and you run out of money, you just stop paying, so I guess that works for them, so. We did talk to Cops Gear last week, and he's hopeful to have our two Tahos done within a week or so. And then we'll get those out. Then we'll be decommissioning two of the Durangos. I know that there's been a couple offices here in the county that were interested in those, so we'll present that to the commissioners when that time comes, so. I think that's all I've got, unless you guys have any questions for me.
Anything else for Travis?
Thank you.
Dawn?
Good evening, everyone. Kind of go over a few things just real quick here. January sixth, since the last council meeting, the volunteers had a meeting and they're now doing micro-training. So, as soon as the meeting's over, they do a small fifteen-minute training on something. And one of the things we just did, just to give you an idea, was we had a call-out at the fatality at nine-thirty, at thirty-one and thirty-one. They needed the light tower, so we made sure everybody's abreast on the operations of the light tower out there at that scene. So, now, when we take it out, we make sure everybody's there. We've also done like a weather training. So, there's a couple of things that the volunteers are bringing forward there. That being said, I want to give the volunteers some praise. Our storms that came through over the weekend, Friday and Saturday, you guys know that we have the Facebook page and we try to keep that abreast of all the storms and so on. I know I just posted one for the one coming in tomorrow. What we've started now, we've tried out, and it worked really well, is when those storms start to hit the Illinois state line, we start a chat group of the ones who are going to be working that particular storm. So, then when it comes and it gets, starts coming on over, you know, I've got two ham operators. They're pulling in radio traffic from the other states. Then we had four of us that, once that weather starts to come across and it hits like the Indiana-Illinois line, if it warrants us getting out, then we get out. And we go to four different locations within the county, plus our two ham operators in their locations. And we start watching all the weather and things going on. The storm we had come in Friday night did not warrant us coming out. We had information enough prior to that. Yes, there was high winds and so on and so forth. But tornado rotation, that particular storm did not raise enough caps, did not go high enough for the rotation, so. But, you guys were, County was safe and we had six volunteers that were ready and willing and to go. So, like I said, I just wanted to give them some kudos there. Brittany did bring up, she went over and did the walkthrough at Rochester, but we also did a safety meeting at Rochester. And then I had a safety meeting down at Caston, so we're attending those safety meetings with the different school systems. The tenth, there was an LEPC meeting and fire chief meeting. We've got four more, what we are calling our core group planning, before we do our June eleventh exercise. So, there's four more of those LEPC core planning meetings to go. The eleventh, the meeting, we had a meeting, me, Brittany, a couple of the city people with Andy. And TJ was not there at that one. But they are looking at a new system. We looked at the, we've had the Everbridge system for our notification system. That company was called?
Reach Alert.
Reach Alert. And I know Brittany's looking at another one. I'm looking at another one. But we have formed a group of us to bring those forward and to go into a different system. We like the Reach Alert, but we're not ruling out all possibilities. That'll be something we look at. And what that does is you can get on there, just like you do with, say, there's Amber Alert, you know, and you get an Amber Alert text to your phone. You guys will be signing up and anything that happens within Fulton County, there's a gas leak and we need to cut, cut off two blocks square, we can hit all those phone cells within that block. If there's tornadoes coming in, we can send out the text for the alerts in the entire county. So, we can specialize it. Most of them, I think, are going to have that capability. So, we're just trying to weed that down to what service we want to use.
They're expensive.
Yeah, they, they are pricey. So, that'll be a long-term goal, but we are working with the city with that too. Trent actually set this meeting up for us, so it won't be a total county expense. We'll be working with the city on that expense too, so, in the long haul. Sorry. I'm also working with Brittany right now. It'll be Brittany, as far as I know, Brittany, myself, Travis, Andy and TJ, and working on some new protocols for EMA call-outs on when, when to expect EMA to be dispatched along with other groups. Right now, we're being requested and/or wondering why we're not getting called out on certain things. So, we want to make sure there's a good protocol in place for EMA to get dispatched out from the girls. So, we're working on that at the same time. Other than that, I think that's about all I've got. And I'm also working, checking with other departments on what their protocols are. A lot of times, I'll go to our D two, our District two, check with them on protocols and questions had and go from there. So, is that about it we've got? I think that's it, guys.
Any questions for Dawn? Anybody? Thank you, Dawn. Last but not least, Amy?
Oh, keep quiet. I'm also hearing from Pete.
I'll talk to him.
So, this is the flyer for the current month for the Warming Center West. You have one of those already ready?
Yes.
So, we are working to finish strong for the Warming Center. This is the last month for the season, so it's been interesting, to say the least. We've had a big learning curve. We thought we knew everything until we started doing it and something comes up every day. So, we have a good team of individuals and I can attest to Dawn and her support of all of the things and just the sponsorships that came in. Do I have to look at that? I want to have to go over here?
Yes.
I thought there was something right there.
Yeah, you're aggravating my camera.
Oh, am I aggravating it?
No.
Just getting confused. I am grateful for all the support, whether it's financial or, you know, the hospital, lots of restaurants who have given food for the Warming Center, the churches that have been a part of it. So, our next step, we asked the commissioners, which I believe they tasked Dawn with figuring out what to do with all the things. So, Hope may buy a storage unit to put that stuff in for the county. We have money that came in, so the county did pay for that, so we want to make sure that they tell us what to do with that. And then, everything will be done on the thirty-first. And then we'll have a volunteer appreciation event just to talk about what the next steps are. We'll learn about the grant that Trent and the team put in for the permanent shelter. I believe he said that was June or July, when they'll know what that looks like, so. And other news, we are meeting with the HR Association here in Fulton County to talk about transportation. Doug and I to meet with them regarding what Transpo potentially could do to help with the survey that was taken that showed the employers needed some assistance. So, we're going to be meeting in April and then working with Dave Summers with the Beaman Home and Crisis Pregnancy. So, not a lack of jobs to be done to try to work on things. So, we're excited to continue to try to help where we can, so. Any questions? Okay. Short, sweet, to the point. Thanks.
I want to hold you off till new business, Rick. Next, we've got some transfers. The first one, County General, County Council. Thirty-nine eight zero zero, the consultant fee. They're pressing eighteen dollars and we're going to transfer it to appropriations. Two-one zero zero zero, office supplies. Transfer to pay for Patty Guyer's badge for the council. Now, take a motion. Now, take a motion to approve.
Don't move.
Pete moved, second. Second, who is it?
Steve.
Steve, or Steve?
Steve.
Whomever. All in favor? Seven-zero. Next, funds, eleven-sixty-nine LRS, from County Highway. For bid, new equipment and stone, they requested eight-hundred dollars and transferred from consulting This is to cover the consultant bill until appropriation can be done. Entertained a motion to approve. Randy moved to approve, second. Secondary, all in favor? Seven-zero. Next, computer maintenance software fund from prosecutor's office. Transfer from computer maintenance software, one-hundred-and-fifteen dollars and thirty-two cents. Transfer to office supplies, one-hundred-and-fifteen dollars and twenty-three cents. They went over the office supply budget. All in favor? I guess I'll entertain a motion to approve first. Steve approved, second. Chase seconded, all in favor? Next one's from County General, Fulton County Soil and Water Conservation District. For postage, two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. From maintenance, copier maintenance, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars. From dues, forty-three-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars. From continuing education, five-hundred dollars. And for building rent, thirty-one-hundred-and-eighty dollars. Transfer to contractual services, eight-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars. And this is a transfer to pay the one lump sum instead of lying items that are budgeted. Transfer goes into contractual services for payout. And this is, last year, we decided for budget reason, we would just pay them a lump sum and let them do it to pay it out, instead of lying out everything. This creates a lot of confusion and time between payment and the actual cost. So I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Chase moved to approve, second. Randy seconded, all in favor? Seven-zero. Thank you very much. We have no additional appropriations this month. In next month, we will have some. Minutes, did you ask to go through the minutes? There was a correction that was said. Patty, did you understand the, it was, when he said it was ham radio, yes. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as written.
I moved.
Pete moved to approve, second. Patty seconded, all in favor? Seven-zero. I'll send this down to sign. Where's getting along here? Old business. Randy?
No.
Sure.
Chase?
Yes, sir.
Barry?
No, sir.
Hey? Steve?
No.
Pete?
Yes, sir.
I do not... Let me do this. Any old business? Next, we will go to new business. Randy? New business? Chase?
Do we want to discuss the Times Theater request at all? I know we got that email. I just didn't know if we wanted to discuss it and all that.
I'm not real sure. I read it, but I'm not real...
Wasn't sure there was an actual...
I don't think there was a request. I think it was just wants and needs, but I could be wrong. Julie sent out an email.
Julie. Stand by. She did, she gave us an update on what?
Yeah, it was, I just thought it was an update.
An update, kind of maybe a wish list?
I think so.
Yeah, I mean, just things that they would like to do as, as they get to funding, not necessarily...
Yeah, I think they're, I mean, yeah, it's not a specific request, but it looks like they're asking for some support from us.
Well, that's something we can discuss in the future.
I guess, I would think if Julie comes in here, we'd be glad to discuss what, what options are available.
Well, if I could find it, I'd do it.
Yeah, I saw it a second ago.
I did, too.
Here it is.
I did, too.
On March fourteenth.
Basically, the subject was, oh, twenty-twenty-five overview, financial and fundraising rules, was the title.
And it says, any support you could provide would be greatly appreciated. Your contribution, no matter how big, will have a meaningful impact in helping us strengthen the Times Theater.
Now, that... Yeah, right now, I think if, if that's the case, yeah, we have to put things on the back burner for now until we know it.
Yeah.
State's going to do, plus the fact that if, to me, anyway, if it's important, she'll be in here and talk to us about it, instead of doing everything by email, I think.
No, I totally agree with you.
All right. No, but thank you. Anything else, Chase?
Nope, that's it.
Barry?
No, sir.
Patty?
No.
Pete?
No.
I'm going to, I asked Rick, he has something to talk about.
Yes, I gave you guys a couple sheets of paper. I mean, regional planning, council. What this is, trying to think back how this was all done, this was always taken out of Fedco's budget for years and years, and I think it was last year for the payable the year before, or however it was. They decided it need broke out and it needed to be paid. The county needed to pay it, so we took it out of Fedco's budget for that year to pay for it. Now, we got it again, and we got looking, and Fedco's budget went up last year. So I don't know if any money got taken out, that's, I had a discussion with Ron and Pete earlier. We don't, we don't know where it's supposed to come from or how it's supposed to work. See if you guys had any reelection, re, I didn't say that, but had any insight of how, how it was supposed to be set up on your end, or if you remember, or what?
I don't remember anything about it. Pete has a better recollection, but mine is, we need to go back through the minutes, just to see exactly, I sure, I do not remember.
I'm not positive either, but I'm pretty sure that part of the reason Fedco's budget was increased was to cover this expense as part of the payment, like, like Ron says, until we read the minutes to know for sure, but I was thinking that their payment that came from the city and the county just comes out of that. This isn't, that's, this isn't supposed to be an additional bill for us. I'm pretty sure it's part of their budget, but...
I know they did separate it out a couple years back, but they took, was supposed to be taking money out of his budget. His budget wasn't supposed to be as high as it is, I don't think. And order, the fifteen thousand, whatever it was, was supposed to have been taken out to pay for it, because it was always, that was part of his deal to pay for it. That's all I can remember. Other than that, I can't remember...
So the budget he sent us has association dues of twenty thousand in his budget.
It does?
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe, maybe that's where it's supposed to come out of. I don't know.
I'm pretty sure that's what he said.
I guess before we can vote on it, I think we need to table it and try to find the minutes and confirm, because I'm almost positive that this amount comes out of his budget that's the payment he gets for a budget for here.
Yeah, and I, I don't see a due date on it, so I don't, I don't think we're that big of a hurry. I don't think it matters anywhere, if you guys look it over, but I didn't, I don't see one on it, so if they call and ask, we'll just tell them, we'll wait till the next council meeting and we'll get an answer.
In that case, yeah, we need to reach out to Michael and see what, at least that's my feeling. Any other comments from anybody? If not, I'll entertain a motion, whatever motion is made, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion and we table it until we research the minutes from when it was decided.
I have a motion to table it until we get a chance to look over the minutes, and we'll discuss it next month. Steve, did you second it?
Yeah.
Steve seconded, all in favor? Seven-zero.
Okay, thank you.
All right, one other new business. I would like to make a proposal. We, and it won't be done this month, it will be done next month, but historically, we have taken rollover amounts that we've rolled over from previous year's budgets, and we've been allowed to take a portion of that to transfer to Rainy Day, which that's our emergency fund. So I would like to propose with what we rolled over, that we take two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars or any amount less than that, whatever is proposed, and roll that over to Rainy Day. What we'd have to do is create a resolution that Kathy would write up. We vote on it next month, but I would like council approval to at least start the process. If someone has a figure in mind, less than two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, I will entertain it. I just want to be able to keep that fund healthy, because that's our backup.
And we just use some of it here.
And we did, yeah, we just used some, of course, not two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, but still, as we all know, it don't take much to create a six-figure problem, and I'd like to keep that health, that fund healthy. So if I have your approval, I would like to go ahead, we will instruct Kathy to make the resolution to take that money, which is already in our general fund. All we're doing is tying up in Rainy Day, so...
I'm good with it.
Everybody good with that, then?
So what's the percentage of that for our, what we're rolling over?
We're allowed fifteen percent.
Just fifteen percent, yeah. Sounds good to me.
Actually, we're allowed more than that, but if you take the figures, the state changed, Kathy and I were going back and forth, I had a figure in mind, and come to find out after this morning, the state changed the rules, of course, you know, moved the goalposts, so we can put a whole lot more in it, but I don't want to take any more out of the general fund to short-change it as well because of the issues coming up with the, the state budgets and all that, so that we can keep a healthy fund in there. So Kathy, if you would do that for me, please, I would appreciate that, and we will have that business, and we'll conduct our resolution next month. Any other new business? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Who was that?
Chase.
Chase is second. Second. Pete seconded, all in favor? Thank you very much.